A call to order the special meeting of the Caribelle City Commission. It's Monday, October 21st, 2019. It's 1:30 PM at the Caribelle City Hall. And we'll ask Commissioner Allen to please say the invitation and then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. So he please stand.
Our God and Father, heaven, we're so grateful that this beautiful day you've given us in this lovely town we get to live in and work in. We ask you to be with us that our service may be acceptable on your side, that what we do will be in harmony with your will. And we pray in Jesus' name we'll be in harmony.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one item, one business item today. And it's written as discussion and possible action concerning raises included in the 2019-2020 budget. So we added in our general fund, we added some $3,500 to the police department, $3,500 to the administrative department, so that we could, well, my request was to give raises to Mr. Officer Lieutenant now, Brandon, and then to those several folks who hadn't received promotional certification style longevity style raises over the past couple, three years. So how do we want to start out this?
Let's take care of Mr. Frank.
All right. Well, we do have, and actually, I was going to suggest that we address the police department first. And so he is, he is on the list for the police department. I understand that Commissioner Melander wants to do a percentage. I don't suggest a percentage because of the mere fact that the city's never done a percentage before. And we haven't discussed that as an agenda item. We haven't, you know, looked at the pros and cons of it. And actually, we're in the process of hiring an HR firm that will advise us on whether or not we should do percentages on raises and whether or not other cities do that. And what is a good percentage range? You know, what is, what is compatible? So I-
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Most that I'm familiar with is used percentages. And I'm anxious to see and anxious to get our HR firm going. And I strongly feel that that's the direction that they're going to recommend for us is percentage increases. And customarily, what I see from others and what I'm familiar with are percentage increases. And in particular, our lieutenant's position, I would recommend that we give him a 10% increase. Customarily, normally, when there's a promotional in, promotion within the ranks, the person either gets a 10% increase or a minimum of the pay scale, which we don't have pay scales established yet. And that's part of what our HR firm hopefully will do for us. But I'm going to move that we increase the lieutenant's position by 10%.
All right, we have a motion to increase the lieutenant's position by 10%.
I'll say.
Okay. All right, discussion. I am going to suggest that we deny this motion because none of the other folks in Caribelle history, as far as I know, has, have ever been given a 10, a raise, a percentage raise. And I don't think that it's appropriate to start that now at this point in time. I think it would be more appropriate to wait until we get our recommendations from our HR firm. And if we need to increase the lieutenant's salary from what we end up increasing it today, then we will do that. And if we need to, if, if the budget can allow it, do we know if the budget can even allow a 10% raise? Do we know what effect that's going to have on retirement? Do we know what effect that's going to have on FICA? Do we understand that the retirement for the police department is 24? The retirement for the police department is 24.48%. That is basically 25% of the police officer's salary. Do we know how that's going to affect their retirement? Have we studied that out? And I would definitely say to, I am going to be voting no on this. Now, will, I do want a raise and, for the lieutenant, a raise that the chief has suggested. He has a pay scale that he's suggesting at this moment that he is familiar with. And he has compared it to other pay scales in the area. And if the HR firm comes back and says that our pay scales are off, that we need to go to percentages, then moving forward, I would say yes. Percentages would be an easy way to handle.
With my experience with percentage, the one that's getting big money gets big raise, one that gets nothing gets nothing.
10% on this particular situation would give him roughly-
No, thank you, but answer.
Yeah.
Would roughly give him a $1.69 an hour increase.
What you suggest, Mayor, would do?
I just suggest, I just said that I'll be voting no. I, I will, if I have to, I will make a motion for the lieutenant for a dollar amount per hour increase, but not for a percentage at this point. Because if we do that, then we've got to do that for others. And there's others around us that have received increases recently, and it was not done at a percentage. I think we need to raise everybody up gently to where we're at a level playing field. And whenever our HR firm suggests you need to raise it this amount for dollar amount per hour, or you need to raise it percentages, then we'll move forward. Otherwise, let's just forget about the HR firm. We're just going-
Well, I'm, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Frank Mathis. So where, when you give, say that you got somebody making $50,000 a year gets 10%. Somebody making $20,000, there's a whole lot of difference there.
And I hate to give Mr., you know, I don't want to give lieutenant 10%. Then I've got to give all the higher up salaries 10%. And you're getting out of, out of sync here. Yes, Chief?
Well, another thing is, is we took the money that we had to work with and we worked it out, a dollar amount, to where it would fit into the budget. Without knowing what that 10% would be, we'd have to go back and, and re-figure that and see if it's going to go over our budget or what. I mean, I don't know without setting down on-
So what do you suggest?
Well, she got what I suggested there.
But we're dealing on a motion to give a 10% increase, and I'll call and vote for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
But I have more comment.
Okay, go ahead. You can go ahead and make a comment. I'll, I'll call again. I'll call again. I'll call again. Go ahead.
Well, either way you look at it, if, again, you know, 10% of his hourly salary is, like I said, is roughly a $1.69 an hour. And I know that recently, in the last year, we've given some dollar amounts and didn't use increase, I mean, didn't use percentages. And most of those were like a dollar and a half. I think we gave a dollar and a half to one of your officers, I think, back a couple months ago for their additional duties. And we just grabbed a dollar and a half out of the air and we give them a dollar and a half.
Right.
So the 10% is not out of kilter with what your budget has money in it to cover. So you're not out of kilter with that at all. And a percentage increase, I do understand and I agree with what Commissioner Mathis says. However, each employee has a variation. Everyone's not on the same pay level. Each employee has a different pay level. They have a different pay level for different reasons. And without going into a lot of detail, that's, that's basically, like I said, what our HR firm's going to do. And that's what I base most of mine. Like I said, most employers that I know have used percentages. And that keeps a separation between those employees' duties and responsibilities, their tenure, everything that's involved, and that keeps a separation. And you don't give dollar amounts. And it never does give a separation between duties and responsibilities between others. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from with a percentage increase. And I feel strongly that, and I disagree with the mayor, I think that our HR firm's going to go in that, in that direction. And I don't feel like we should do away with our HR firm. I think we should continue to go forward as we're doing. And I think we're going to get some positive direction from it.
I do too.
So, so anyway, my motion still stands. And I think a 10%, we're looking at a, we're looking at a promotional increase here and not a performance increase. We're looking at a promotional increase. So that's where I'm basing mine off of.
All right. So we, and I do agree that the HR firm would be helpful. I, I think we're, we're jumping into uncharted waters at this moment to go and use percentages when we have not used percentages before. And I think we just should maintain a steady course as we have. And whenever the HR firm makes their professional recommendations, we will decide whether or not we want to, to use that.
Man, you said it come out the water now?
One sixty-nine.
Roughly a dollar, $1.69, roughly.
Well, could we just agree that, let's just do a $1.69?
Well, when we get to, we're, right now, we're talking about a percentage. And I don't want, for me, I don't want to-
Well, that's for y'all to hash out.
To talk on whether, if we go on a percentage, then we're going on a percentage. And, and I think we shouldn't do that at this moment. If the HR firm makes their recommendation.
Does that include their total cost with the retirement and everything too?
No.
No, that's their hourly salary.
All right. So I call for a motion.
Call for a vote.
Okay, yes, I'm calling for a vote. And do Mr. Melander, Commissioner Melander, does vote yes, that he would like to move forward with the percentage increase to all of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And all of those not in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's four not in fa, four not in favor and one Commissioner Melander in favor. So the motion does not carry. I've got a lot to say here.
Is that thing just open to go ahead and do a dollar?
Yeah, but I want, I, I have something I want to say.
Okay.
And the chief has suggested a dollar amount. And we can go over the entire budget or the, the salary budget and take a look at it and, and listen to what the chief has in mind, and we may be able to increase it a little bit, what he originally suggested. But I just want to tell you that other, and I, I've thought, I've done a lot of thought on this, and I, other than very recently, annual evaluations for city employees have not been completed in over 10 years. And as a result, merit, merit type pay increases based on performance haven't been given. Many organizations offer merit increases, but the only true way to document higher performance and to justify merit pay increase is through an annual evaluation. And those have not been done until very recently. So the city was, it was difficult to offer merit increases. The city has not adopted the policy of annual cost of living raises, say like 2.5%. But these types of automatic increases do not motivate the employees to improve their performance. Why would an employee strive to excel when an increase is automatic and everyone gets the same increase anyway? The city's unwritten policy has been in the past that the city employee raises were given based on employment longevity, promotions, when a milestone certification was given or obtained, or when job responsibilities had expanded. Over the past two and a half years, some city employees have received significant pay increases because of a promotion, obtaining a certification, and for expanded responsibilities. Some employees have not had a pay increase in six years, have taken unexpanded tasks and responsibilities, have longevity with the city. Two are probationary employees, and one was recently promoted. Today, for me, it's these employees that I will be suggesting for a pay increase. It's not my intention today to change the policy, like move to a percentage style increase for performance or promotion, or to increase entry level pay rates today. Those things need to be left up to the recommendation of the HR firm. I'm not trying to develop any pay grades today. Pay grades provide a framework for compensation. All these things need to be left up to the recommendations of the HR consulting firm, which we are working on. I will suggest increases to recognize the contributions that these few employees have made over the past six years to help bring their pay to a level playing field with their fellow employees in preparation for the upcoming HR firm recommendations. So it's our responsibility to protect the city's resources, and we need to, to pay close attention to what we do today. All right?
Mayor, can I make one comment?
Yes.
You did mention in there a, a percentage increase, 2.5%?
I just said that was for an example. I mean, you could do a cost of living. I don't know what the cost of living increases is. I have, I have no idea. Sorry.
Then I would love to be able to do a dollar amount or something.
I don't know what the cost of living here, maybe I better give this to Keisha. I have one. Do I need to make more? Let me see, there was a loose one. Here, I'll give this to Courtney. Cal, did you make a motion?
Yep.
What's that? I missed it.
That we go to the dollar amount.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were joking. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I never joke. Why you talking about?
Just all the time. It's hard to know what's real. Okay, and Frank too. All right, so Commissioner Melander, oh, that's Commissioner Allen. Motion to-
Can you delete that off of the CD?
Oh, your motion to use a dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't specify the dollar, but-
Just a dollar amount?
We'll have to figure out amount.
Okay. So we have that motion by Commissioner Allen.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say that I had some things in mind that I have to talk to our administrator. I'm going, I'm not going to bring it up now because what I want to do is, I wanted to have a minimum pay grade for our lowest paid inmates. I mean, inmates, I've been talking to them for too long, employees. But with, with the HR committee looking at all this, I'm going to hold off on, to a later date, to this recommendation coming back. Because in their recommendation, they might suggest we have a minimum pay. So I'm just going to stand back and vote on whatever we decide here. But I, I did look at, I do think $10 an hour is not enough for anybody to feed a family on nowadays. But I'm going to hold off till we get this HR committee recommendation. And we'll bring this back up. That's all I got to say.
All right. All right. Any comments? Okay. I will say whenever you raise like that, then you need to, the HR firm will talk to us about or make recommendations because then you may be raising an entry level into close to some, a pay that someone that's been here six, 10 years is making.
And I understand that, I talked to that with administrator, and I understand that-
So we have to make adjustments.
If we raise somebody up, what, somebody that's been here five years, we're going to have to adjust that some too. I'm just going to hold off on that recommendation.
Okay. So for the-
Now, we're, as I understand what we're saying, we're just talking about the police pay?
At this moment.
Not the whole.
We, and then there's some other key employees in the administrative department and in the water and sewer who haven't, yes.
There's another issue.
Yes, I've got, yes, we're going to deal with all of that today.
Okay. Just one comment. It's, it's never happened before. That's not like saying I've never been hit by lightning before. So that's, you know, but I appreciate the comment on that.
Okay. So all this is on your first- Oh, we got the motion. Oh, thank you. Commissioner Allen motion, thank you, Keisha, motion to use a dollar amount for raise increases. And that second was by Commissioner Mathis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. Commissioner Melander opposes, but that motion does carry. Okay. On this spreadsheet here, all this first page is, and you'll see, and you'll see three more pages that look like this today, is just a simple calculations to give everyone an idea of what the rates per hour are. And they all work, or get paid for 280 hours a year. So if you, if you're going to give a, give a $2 increase, 280, 280 times, excuse me, 2,080 hours, that's $4,160. So you can, you know, you can just use that for reference today as, as we're talking about these things. And I didn't do it to the penny, to the inch penny, or to $1.69 or $1.70. I just, because generally, when we're doing it in a dollar amount, we usually go by 25 cent increments. It seems like it's been that way in the past. But for the police department, in this first column here, these are their current base salaries and for each, each person. And you'll see the deputy is listed there because that's what we had on our budget, but the deputy is no longer with us. Now, you'll see in the second column, there's a with extra. And this is used on their worksheets, and this came directly off the worksheets that staff used this year to develop the budget. And the with extra means that, that is the amount of, the total of their salaries that they're paid when they take vacation pay. You know, they can cash in some vacation, one to two weeks a year, depending upon their seniority. And when they cash in vacation, then that is increasing their actual take home salary. And generally, that is included in the salary budget line. So I took the with extra amount and I subtracted the base pay from the with extra amount, and you see the with extra amount there, right there to the right. That's what the with extra, and we need to know that when we're calculating so that we'll know what our total budget item, line item will be. So on the second page, you see the police right up here, start from left to right, across the top, the police, that's their current base salaries with extra. So I went back, I see the chief makes this amount. I went back and with his extra is this amount. I, I am myself proposing a $2 increase for, for the chief. If you go back, you'll see $2 is $4,160. I'm proposing that because the chief works 24 hours a day. He's on call 24 hours a day. He's taking on extra responsibilities since the years I've known him to be chief. He uses his personal equipment, his personal trailers, trucks, motorcycles, boats, whatever the heck he's got to use to get the job done. And when we worked for Hurricane Michael, he was out there 24 hours a day. He answers my phone call, texts, any time of the day. And he does go the extra mile, and he's motivated, and he keeps his staff motivated. And I want to bring him up to a level playing field with the other supervisors, and so that he'll be prepared in the event we go to a percentage style increase. The chief has recommended for the lieutenant now, a $1.25 an hour. And that would bring up his base pay and with extra, with the extra, and I used the deputy's extra because I didn't know where, how much to use for an extra, that makes his total pay there, I see $40,653.08. The chief also needs a, an evidence custodian. I don't know the name of the person you have in mind for that, but he has suggested a 50 cent pay raise for the evidence custodian. And you'll see the ba, proposed base salary there that the chief has discussed with me. And it, it comes out to $38,850. And then the other two entry level, he, he wants to, $38,851.48. The other two entry level, he wants to leave as the same for now, unless the HR firm suggests something different. But we always have to remember if our budget can afford it or not. So there you, and then there's the overtime that was on the worksheets that staff used this year. And the current budget, the 17 is for part-time officers and the 12.5 is overtime. The current budget, you'll see there for proposed base salaries, with the extra would be that. Currently, we have in the budget $243,500. That gives us $6,085.76 surplus. But now we have to calculate the retirement cost. In this next column, you'll see the retirement of cost here, the current retirement cost. If I need to go over it, column by column, I will. Police Department, police law enforcement officers' retirement is 25.48% of their pay. And the total retirement, current retirement cost right now is $59,381.34. We have budgeted $60,000. With the proposed salaries, you see the proposed salaries there with extra, which came from this top right-hand corner. With the retirement is, then on the right-hand side, you see all of the proposed retirement costs there. They increased, as you can see that, and they will increase significantly at that rate. And for instance, the retirement cost to the city for the lieutenant at a $1.25 an hour increase would be, his total retirement cost to the city would be $10,358.40. That's what I call your total loaded labor cost. And then that makes the total retirement $60,493.15. And we have budgeted $60,000, so we have a $493.15 deficit, which could be, which could come out of the surplus on the salary side. Same thing for FICA cost, but that is 7.65%. And you see the current FICA cost here with your proposed salaries and your FICA cost, your total FICA cost with the proposed increase is $18,162.19. We have budgeted $18,000, so we have a $162.19 deficit. Then right here, I've just compiled it where you can see right in here, your salaries. We have a surplus, $6,085.76. We have a deficit on the retirement, $493.15. A deficit on the FICA, $162.19. And a final surplus of $5,430.42. So there is some money there if we want to increase the lieutenant's pay somewhat. You can go back and look at your, your schedule of rates per hour there. Remember, you've got to keep in mind your FICA and your, your retirement. And then also, the chief wants to use, and he wants to pay Miranda for some technical support. He needs help whenever a new employee is hired to enter all of their information on a state database, that type thing. And let me ask him, and we're trying to figure out how would we pay Miranda? And that, do you, you know, and so this is what, some of the deficit would be used is to pay Miranda. But the chief and I have discussed that no matter what is paid, whether it's a dollar amount, or 50 cents, or whatever, or a percentage, we still have to keep in mind that FICA and retirement will come out of it, that we can't really hire her as a subcontractor. But he wants to pay her for her help that she gives him, which she does provide him a lot of help. And I've seen it myself. So what do we think we want to do here? Do you think you want to increase the lieutenant a little bit more to come up? You want to go 25 cents more?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, so that would be a $1.50. I don't think that would run us over on our, let me see if I have my calculator right That's just 25 cents.
That ain't going to make that much difference.
No, it's not going to make that much difference on the, on the percentage, you know, like $6 or something for the year. So we could do that, you know, raise the lieutenant to a $1.50 if, if the staff wants to do that. And if the chief goes along with that.
That's good, man.
Okay.
Motion, we do it.
All right. And, and do you want, are we, are you just discussing for the, for the lieutenant at this point?
At this point, yes.
Or by, are we just doing lieutenant?
Yes.
Are you okay, Chief?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis to increase the lieutenant's pay to, as a promotional rate, at $1.50 an hour. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a second. By Commissioner Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. All right, so I want to go here now and discuss the, my suggestion for the increase for the chief, and the increase for the evidence custodian. The chief at $2 an hour, which would bring his, his base rate from $45,560 to $49,720. And that would actually put him in line with more with what our past streets and roads supervisor made. And the chief is supervising five full-time officers, part-time officers, and all kinds of unruly citizens. And we, we do appreciate the work he does, but I'll go ahead and motion for that. A $2 pay increase for the chief, and 50 cent an hour pay increase for the evidence custodian is, as suggested by the chief. And I'm making that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Okay.
It's concerning the evidence custodian, and I had discussed it with the chief. Just a reminder, he's still, that person is still on probation. This is not a promotional increase, we're just recommending that he give him 50 cents an hour, and the individual's still on probation. Do we want to do that?
I think that this is just a rate for the evidence custodian. Is that, is that what I'm, go ahead, sir.
Yes, it was for evidence custodian. And we did talk about that earlier. And I see his point of view, but at the time, and like I explained to you earlier, the circumstances, you know, it was what it was. You know, we were in a bind, we had, we just about completely replaced the whole police department almost, in a short amount of time. So we didn't have a whole lot to choose from. This guy that took this spot, now, we need an evidence custodian, and we couldn't help that he's still on, on probation.
I will say, just a minute.
And I, I am for giving him a little bit of a raise for the extra duties that he's going to be taking on.
The, when we hire, and it's, and it's happened, when we hire someone in at the base rate to do streets and roads, and the next thing you know, they got DOC certified, and we're paying them, how much do we pay them more a year? $2,000 more a year, and they're still on probation. And I really don't see, you know, much to do with it. No. So we have that motion by Mayor La Paz, the second, by Commissioner Walden, for the $2 per hour and the 50 cents per hour for two different employees. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. Okay. So that takes care of that. You, we'll recalculate this, you'll still have some surplus, and we need to figure out, go put our heads back to the, whatever you put them back to, and figure out how we're gonna maybe pay Miranda a bonus, or supplement her, for her extra duties that she provides to the police department. Okay. All right, we're gonna move now to the administrative department. And this one just gets a little more complicated. As we go along, they get more complicated. The water sewer's done. Really, yeah, there you go. So you see, you got your worksheet there to refer to. That's the, you know, your same rates per hour, and then you'll see the finance clerk and the administrator and their overtime, and that's what their current salaries are, and their with extra that showed on this year's worksheets, and the with extra amount. So if you'll go to the second page, you'll see we have the current administrative salaries there, right there. There, with the extras, $144,282, we budgeted $103.5. There's $40,782 deficit, and the reason for that, and I just put it there so that you could see what, you know, all the administrative salaries. The reason for that is, the deficit is that because the finance clerk and the administrator's salaries are split with the water and sewer, and we will get down to the nitty-gritty with that. I have, I did speak with the administrator and ask her if she had any ideas for increases for her staff, and she said she hadn't really thought about it. So I have given it some deep thought. I've worked closely with these ladies over the years. Miranda is a workhorse, and Miranda gets a lot of the work, it's, it's, she is, and if you look at her job description, she covers pretty much everything. And she's got a new title, administrative assistant. She's doing the HR work, she's doing the property management, she's doing grant management, she does payroll for us. She actually has taken on extra, extra duties by training, pretty much every day, the new water and sewer billing clerk. She is, provides hands-on training, hands-on supervisory duties for the water and sewer billing clerk. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the job she's doing, and I would like to see that increase at $1.50 an hour, just as we've given our water treatment plant supervisor or operator for taking on extra duties, and as we gave the police officer back in the past for taking on extra duties. And that's what I would like to see.
What a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, so that's just for the $1.50 for Ms. Miranda. Okay. We have that motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Mathis.
I will, for discussion's sake. I will say that I have a proposal too on percentages, but I see that we're not going to do percentages.
Okay, let's see now, we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. All right. I have, I put there 50 cents per hour for the administrator and for the city clerk. It's not much of a raise, but what I'm looking forward to is the HR proposal. We're talking, we're getting into salaries, upper-level salaries, and if you'll notice down the line there, when we get to it, the administrator also has a significant retirement cost of 25.41%, and we need to take that into careful consideration when, when giving an increase at, at that pay level. They may deserve more. Now, I, I did a lot of thinking about it. I went back and forth, and this is, this is my proposal, but before we go further on it, I think we need to take a look at how it will all play out with the retirement and the FICA. So you see what their, what the salaries would be there with the, with 50, 50 cents for each of them. Now, on this final column here, you'll see that the salary down there for the finance clerk and the administrator now is down to $18,753.29, because that's the amount, the amount that's applied to the general fund budget. 50% of that goes to the water and sewer, and we'll get to that when we get to water and sewer. Then you've got their overtime, you've got the city clerk now at $43,511.90. And Ms. Barbara, I'm understanding, did not want any adjustment because she, that would affect her social security income. Maybe she'll change her mind, I don't know. But that's the total administrative wages. The current budget is $103,500, that gives a surplus of $2,103. Then, if you look at their retirement, that, with their proposed salaries, their retirement total cost is $13,557. We budgeted $13,200, that's a $357 deficit. FICA, you will see down there that with the proposal, as is, that's the total FICA, $7,756.81. We budgeted $8,000, that's a $243.19 deficit. Over here, then, it is just consolidated, your salary surplus, $2,103.84. Retirement deficit, $357.14. FICA surplus, $243.19. Final surplus, or the final surplus is $1,989.89. And I do want to remind you that in April of 2017, the city clerk did receive a $2,500 increase, at a time when no one, no one on staff had received increase. She did get a certification, floodplain certification, which has come in handy for some of our building permits. So, but she was able to have those funds to use at, at her discretion for quite some time before any raises were given to any other employees. So I do, I do want to mention that as well. So how, how do we want to move forward on this? And I picked up additional duties as well, I'm doing the permitting. I'll go ahead and motion for a 50 cent raise for the administrator and the city clerk, as shown here. All right, we'll let Mr. Cowell, all of our phones are ringing.
President's calling.
Okay.
Tell Trump you don't want to talk to him.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor La Paz for a 50 cent raise for the two positions, second by Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion?
Just, just a comment, and I just want to repeat myself. I had a, and this is for information for the rest of the commissioners. I had worked up a proposal, guys, on a 4% increase for some of these positions. And anyway, I won't present it, because I know how you guys feel, but I had worked up a 4% increase for some of these positions that have not had any increases in the last numerous years, as the mayor stated. So with that, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, my comment is, I'm gonna comment again.
Okay.
I'm just waiting on HR committee.
And I agree with that.
That some of you guys, what you get now might be more later. We're gonna wait for, so I'm just gonna go along what we got here.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of Courtney, since we've started this HR committee, that is an extra workload on her also, as Commissioner Melander knows, she does quite a bit for us.
I know, and, and already she, this morning, already got out the, the job description, and it was a good-looking document, and I thank you very much.
And she made, every time we agree to make a change, she goes in there and she makes the decision. She does a lot.
I will say that I originally had 75 cents on there, but I was afraid that, that we would have some conflict in, in staff, so I put it to 50 cents. But, you know, if we want to, I can withdraw my motion if we want to change, if we want to do something different. There is a little bit of
And just?
Surplus there.
Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
And with that, guys, that's what I was saying with what I was proposing with the 4%, it actually gave those people, as we're describing with the city administrator, a little bit more of a salary increase, and, and those positions that have not had any. And I do agree with all the statements that's being made by the other commissioners here, that I'm anxious for the HR firm to give us some more positive direction, but my thought was looking strictly at those that had not had any kind of adjustments in the last six, seven years, or whenever it, before my time, and to try to recognize their hard work. So that was my proposition.
And I'm just trying to keep peace in the house. Originally, I had something else, but we just want to, we just want to have a pleasant work situation, so if we want, do we want to withdraw this and consider something else?
I'm waiting on Red Shaw.
Okay, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm all opposed.
Okay. All right, so that motion carries. And I do understand, Commissioner Melander.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the water and sewer department. We can keep all that, it's a whole package. This is getting more complicated here.
Does it?
Yeah. Well, there's 10 people there, and we got, we split salaries, so it gets a little more complicated.
It does.
And you'll see their salaries are split down to 1/4. Okay, so there's their work, their regular, their worksheet, and this was a little more complicated, because you have the water side and you have the sewer side. And do we need to go over that, or you can just use that for reference if you, if you need to? Okay. All right, so water proposals, and I did talk to, don't leave us.
I'm on the road, but
Okay. I, I talked with Charlie about this. He, of course, he will not, he's not asking for an increase at this point. Maybe when the HR comes back, we'll see what they say.
He'll wait on the
And, and then the superintendent on the water side had just received an increase, and the, excuse me, the wastewater plant operator just received an increase, so we're not, we're not addressing that today. But the, now, this person that's billing and sewer, water billing, water sewer billing clerk, collections clerk, Charlie would like to see that one and the other person that's on probation right now. He'd like to see the probationary increase be $1. And that's not gonna happen right at this point, is that correct, Charlie, Mr.?
On what was that, I'm sorry?
The probationary increases, they're not
Right. They're only when they come due.
Come on probation.
They will become due through this year, so we put it in the budget for this year's budget. Shelby will be coming, and then Buddy will be coming along. So we buttoned all that out.
So that's, that's for the future few months down the road, for those two. The billing clerk, and we have one laborer that's on promotion, on probation. Then we have a, the tech two received an increase, and then the tech one has been on board for quite some time. Tech two has been on board for quite some time, and the superintendent suggested 75 cent an hour raise for those two, which brings them up from their, their base rate from $28,704 to $30,264, and from $24,856 to $26,416. Then you see their overtime there. Now, you get down to the administrator, because the administrator and the finance clerk is split with the water and sewer, but the water and sewer each have their own independent budgets, so we have to divide that down to 1/4. So you have just a proposed 12 cent increase for the administrator per hour, and a 38 increase, 38 cents per hour for the finance clerk. And you see the proposed salaries there, at the, to the right with extra, and that comes out to $267,415. The budget right now on the water side is $266,945. That's a $470.58 deficit. But we're just gonna move forward here and take a look at this whole thing. I think we should do that before we
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On your labor tech ones, of those two that have not had an increase in quite a number?
Yes, they haven't had an increase. That's Mr. Briz That's Mr. Griswold and, and Mr. Randy.
Okay.
They have not had an increase in some time. Have they?
Well, actually, Mr. Griswold had had a small one. We tried to bring him up. He was, he had never had a promotional raise from the day he started. So actually, I don't want that, that is a, one that just happened. It should have happened several years back. We were just trying to get it done when I came in as manager.
I think right when you came on board, you suggested a probation increase for getting off probation. And I think we gave him fifty cents.
I think it was.
Yeah.
Correct. Again, we're talking about an employee that's been here for seven years, I believe, and had never had a, had never had a promotional increase from the time he started. So it really wasn't, it's not a recent raise, per se.
Never got an evaluation, I don't think, to have a promotional, a probation increase.
Anyways.
Okay, so your water retirement, you see that there? And your retirement on your water is eight point four seven percent. And your proposed retirement costs now are going to go from twenty-four three eight five point seventy-nine to twenty-five one three two seventy-eight, which we have twenty thousand dollars budgeted for retirement, and we already had a deficit. So we messed up on the budget, the retirement budget in the first place when we were doing our budget this year. So now we've got a five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollar deficit there. Your FICA is seven point six five percent. And you'll see those increases take you up to a total of twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-seven twenty-nine. And the current budget is twenty-two thousand. That gives you one thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-one cent of surplus. So we'll go to the, on the sewer side, and that's the last page. There's really no proposed increases for any of the employees because it's, it's just Mr. Charlie again, and that's half his, his salary there. And then Manuel, and he's just started on board. And so there's nothing to increase there. It's five thousand for overtime. And then you see for the administrator and finance clerk, that's broke down as one-fourth of that hourly increase that we just approved. And it shows then that the current budget is one oh nine, one oh four. And we have budgeted, that would be the proposed rate. We have a budget of a hundred and seven thousand is the current budget. And we'll have a two thousand dollars seventy, two thousand seventy-two dollar and thirty-eight cent deficit. If you go down and look at your retirements then, and you see how the administrator's retirement plays in, that's something that the person really needs to consider as well with the police department, because those retirements, that's a fourth of their pay. That, that's a chunk. But it's a benefit. It's a benefit for the, for the work they do. But you'll see the retirement then proposed is eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. We have budgeted thirteen thousand, so we have a surplus of one thousand two hundred and seventy-six eighteen. And FICA, as proposed, is eight thousand three hundred and forty-six is the new cost. And we have eight thousand three hundred and twenty-three, so we have a twenty-three dollar and forty-nine cent deficit. Here it is consolidated over here in the corner. Water salaries, four hundred, four hundred and seventy dollars, fifty-eight cent deficit. Water retirement, five thousand one hundred and thirty-two seventy-eight deficit. FICA, one thousand five hundred and forty-two seventy-one. Surplus, sewer salaries, two thousand seventy-two dollar and thirty-eight cent deficit. Sewer retirement, one thousand two hundred and seventy-six. Surplus, sewer FICA, twenty-three forty-nine deficit. We have a total water and sewer deficit of four thousand eight hundred and eighty-three-four, but we began with the water and sewer deficit already because we calculated the retirement wrong. Now, I've talked to Charlie about this and trying to figure out how can we, how can we address these raises? And he has some suggestions here on cutting back on ordering not so many water meters at this point.
Right, well, we had blocked out a couple of things. Filter panels for the reuse filter and water meters is twenty-five thousand and twenty-five thousand on each of them. We just pulled back a little bit to twenty-two thousand and twenty-two thousand. It's almost the same, covers the deficit that we have. Should be an easy fix.
And you're not going to see more water revenues than, that's...
Right. We seem to be putting in more water taps. So the tap fees for water and sewer are both coming in at a more regular basis than we've had in the past. So I think we'll see more revenues this year than we had, which probably superseded anything that were, that's a couple thousand that we're talking about.
But then too, we need to also remember that we're looking at loans for this new project out here, although that is proposed, that it's not going to affect our budget, that the actual income from those base rates will, will pay the loan premium, the loan...
And I, I really don't think that'll even be in this year's budget. It'll probably be next year's budget.
Yeah, next year. And then that, once that happens in a couple of years, you'll have, there'll be more income, but you might have to hire another employee.
Sure.
Taking on a whole other little city over there.
Probably will, bringing in another employee.
So this is what we have, and does anyone want to make a motion regarding this, this proposal, what we have here? Basically, when the two probationaries come off probation, their raise, their salaries would be increased from ten dollars to eleven. And then the two tech one laborers increase their wages at this point by seventy-five cents an hour. And then just to increase the administrator and the finance clerk one-half of the cost of their raises. And also, we need to be careful when we, when we do increase the administrator and finance clerk that the water and sewer budget can handle it, too. We can't just be looking at the general fund on those two, those two positions. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Okay. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Allen. Motion is by Commissioner Mathis, and second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. All right. Now, we had, I don't, I can't remember if we voted on it or not for Lieutenant Brandon's salary to be retroactive to that Saturday today.
We did.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. So we know that his will be retroactive. Do we want these salaries to be retroactive to these other increases that we've talked about? To be retroactive to the first, whatever payday that it would be in this fiscal year?
That's fine.
You know, this, this budget that I showed...
Didn't I want to say that pay raise would come in October the first, basically?
Well, whatever was the first day of this fiscal year? What was the first, I mean...
Oh, the first payday.
Yeah, the first Saturday, the first Saturday?
Yeah.
Are you looking at it, Courtney?
The first Saturday was the fifth.
Okay, so that would be the fifth. That would be when you're, to be retro, and that would be the same thing for Lieutenant Brandon, to be retroactive to the fifth. Do we want to, do we want to consider that?
That's fine.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve the salaries back to the fifth October. Back pay.
Okay, retroactive. Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Is there anything else? Any other discussion? All right, then maybe we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, please.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, that motion is by Commissioner Walden, second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And Keesha, I don't know if I called out the retroactive to the fifth. That was Walden and Mathis. Okay, thank you.